Good morning and welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for November 22, 2017. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission agenda today, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary or staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we'd also like to ask that if anybody has a cellphone or other electronic device, they either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. Consent calendar is first on the list. Items one through five have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or any audience member at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item five, 17 UR 023. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on this item is final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through five staff would like removed?
Item four, please.
Okay. Are there any items one through five that the planning commission would like removed? And are there any other items one through five that the audience would like removed? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one, two, three, and five, in accordance with staff recommendations. Karen made the motion to approve those items, and Mike seconded that motion. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Mr. Chair, if we could take item number four with item number 11.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. So, item number four is a preliminary subdivision plan to create 22 lots in two phases up along Tower Road, and this would just be to the west of the Tower Road Bridge that crosses over Mount Rushmore Road. In addition, item number 11 is a vacation of right-of-way for Fairmont Boulevard that's currently a dedicated right-of-way but not constructed that abuts this proposed plat along that west lot line. And with that, I'd like to show you some slides. So you can see the arrow pointing to the property that's currently zoned office commercial, and that's the acreage that's being proposed for the 18 lots. You can kind of see the area that's also shown as being zoned office commercial south of it. They are, have had conversations with staff on coming forward in the future to vacate a portion of the Tower Road right-of-way and incorporating that into additional lots as a part of Phase Two of the development. You can see Fairmont Boulevard, it's shown in white. And that would be this portion right here. That's not letting me draw here. Here we go. This is the portion that is being proposed for the vacation of right-of-way. An aerial of the property showing that currently it is not developed. You can see to the north of it, that's the Comfort Inn, and you can see a little bit of Ruby Tuesdays. And if you look at the Fairmont Boulevard right-of-way, it's constructed for that portion that is in front of Ruby Tuesdays and Comfort Inn, and then it provides access to the assisted living center further to the west. But that portion that would extend north to Tower Road is not constructed. The right-of-way was secured all the way to Tower Road as a part of plating to the west of this parcel. Based on that steep terrain, however, that applicant did secure a variance not to dedicate or improve the street, rather, and instead signed what we know as a waiver of right to protest any future assessments for the improvement. Looking at the zoning of the property, it does show the right-of-way for Fairmont Boulevard. Tower Road is a collector's street. Fairmont Boulevard would be a commercial street, and of course, Mount Rushmore Road is an arterial street. This is Phase One of the development. It's showing that the lots along the northern end would be platted. We've advised that the right-of-way needs to be included all the way to Tower Road, even if the southern lots aren't getting platted until that right-of-way vacation for Tower Road is submitted for your review as well. But currently, Phase One would include 15 lots, and then Phase Two would include those seven lots. The applicants identified that this will be a townhome development. We had a meeting with the applicant and his consultant last week, and it could be that there may be one or two single-family homes. The zoning would support that, and based on some of the topographic constraints, we see that there probably needs to be some flexibility as to whether or not those are single-family or townhomes. Some drainage designations that will be brought forward as a part of this, and the grading for these lots in conjunction with future grading for Fairmont Boulevard would need to be looked at as this project goes forward, even if Fairmont Boulevard isn't constructed at this time, just to ensure that there is sufficient building envelopes and these folks aren't looking out their back windows into a 20-foot wall of terrain. This is looking north at the end of Fairmont Boulevard down by Comfort Inn, and you can see the ravine. If you look at that commercial building that's on the other side, the street would come right to the left of that. And as you can see, it's probably going to require a bridge be constructed in order to traverse from one side to the other. Again, just a part of the ravine that's there, trying to show you the magnitude of what that depth is on it. Standing on Tower Road looking northwest into the area that would be platted, and you can see how it starts falling off with the trees, that would be the area of Fairmont Boulevard. Looking east on Tower Road, it's important to note that the state has identified that in the future, it's anticipated that that bridge should go away. Maintenance on it is an issue, and for the state's design of arterial streets, which is Mount Rushmore Road, these bridges are not encouraged anymore. Looking west on Tower Road, another site view of the property that would be platted. And then this is looking into the area facing south where Fairmont Boulevard would then connect to the existing street that's by Comfort Inn. The reason I pulled the plat is, in our discussions with the applicant and consultant this week, we identified that since the cul-de-sac has 22 potential residential lots, and our design criteria manual says that on a cul-de-sac street, anytime you exceed 20 lots, it allows the fire department to require that a residential sprinkler system be installed in those homes. The applicant indicated that he would probably be revising the plat as it goes forward to eliminate two of the lots. But in checking the stipulations, I discovered that we didn't actually have one that covered that discussion. So on a handout on the dais, and it's identified with the red item four, you will see one more stipulation that just says that upon submission of a final plat application, they enter into that agreement securing that fire suppression system, or they revise the plat to eliminate two of the lots, which I think will be their preference. The reason I wanted this to be heard in conjunction with number 11 is, as a part of those discussions that we had, we acknowledged that it is going to be costly to build Fairmont Boulevard. But knowing that the street connection will probably be needed in the future, we certainly don't support vacating the right-of-way, especially since the state has made it clear that the bridge connection could go away. So as a part of the preliminary subdivision plan, we are recommending to approve with the stipulations as handed out this morning. And for the vacation of right-of-way, we are recommending that that be denied. As you'll note in the stipulations of approval for the preliminary subdivision plan, it says that as this project goes forward, Fairmont Boulevard would either have to be improved, they have the option of proceeding with the vacation, or they could seek an exception not to improve it at this time. We would rather have those discussions as a part of an exception request, retaining that right-of-way today. So our recommendation would be to deny the vacation of right-of-way. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, and the consultant is here in the audience to speak to this item.
Thanks, Vicki. I do have a speaker request, actually a couple. First one from Tony Marshall, or Cale. Both of you have requests in.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Cale McNibow. I own Spurley Consulting, I'm the design engineer on the project. I have brought along exhibit that shows you the potential future alignment for Fairmont Boulevard. The reason we've come forward with this request to vacate the right-of-way is the constructability issues that are associated with it. Vicki did a great job of pointing out its location, behind the Comfort Inn, Ruby Tuesdays location. What you see here, if you'll allow me the opportunity to sketch on this, because I do love to come up here and sketch on the dais, this is Tower Road up here, and this would be the end of existing Fairmont Boulevard in this location. To create a bridge deck that would span between these two, obviously you can, this is the existing ground, excuse me, this is the existing ground that you see here annotated in red in the ravine. This number right here, from bridge deck to the bottom of the channel, 75 vertical feet, so it would be a tall, tall bridge. It would also, since Fairmont Boulevard's constructed here and Tower Road is constructed here, both ends of this are set. There's not an opportunity to raise or lower the other one. You'd end up with a bridge deck that was on the order, in my opinion, of 500 feet of bridge deck to get from one end of this to the other. That's 500-foot of bridge deck, 75 feet in the air at its deepest point, hanging above the Comfort Inn to achieve this alignment on Fairmont Boulevard, getting us all the way up to Tower Road. What you'd look at, and it doesn't show very well, is embankment material that would be placed in these areas. So this would just be the road constructed on earth and embankment before you entered the bridge deck. And there's potential to move this, you know, this embankment down, but at some point you reach, you reach an elevation where you've got 50-foot of dirt hanging on the side of the hill with the option to obviously fail down into the ravine. So the reason we've come forward with the request to vacate the right-of-way is that, you know, to take a 500-foot-long bridge and expect a guy to sell 20 residential lots to pay for a bridge, it's a little excessive if we assumed a dollar amount of cost for the bridge, and I'm not a bridge designer. So to be honest with you, I've not designed the bridge other than, you know, schematically the potential future alignment for it, but there's a lot of different options as far as the construction of the bridge. Just to put a ballpark number out there, and I'm kind of just tossing it out, but if this bridge were 60 feet wide and 500 feet long, and if we assumed it was 200 bucks a square foot, you're talking on the order of six to eight million dollars. So to, you know, plat 20 residential lots and cover a six to eight million-dollar bridge, it's not, it's not very feasible. I don't know that that property could support enough commercial development to be able to front the cost of this bridge constructed as per the plan. And that's the reason we brought forward this vacation right-of-way issue. With that, I guess, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you had.
Thank you. Tony, would you like to speak as well? I have a request in from you.
Sure. I don't have any lights up for Cale. Okay, cool. Thank you, commission members. My name's Tony Marshall. I'm the applicant for this project, and thank you, Vicki, for an accurate description, and Cale, for an accurate description of this property. I admit I have a hole in the head because I find some fascination and some degree of pleasure in looking at these infill development sites around Rapid City. Oftentimes, there's a reason why they haven't been developed, and certainly reasons why this particular property hasn't been developed, and this is perhaps one of them. And given the difficulty of this site to develop, I really can't contribute $1 towards the construction of an eight-million-dollar bridge. The question comes down to, should this bridge get built over time? This is just a collector's street, not an arterial street, not a principal?
Actually, a commercial street.
Okay, but, yeah, so it's probably equivalent to like an Elm Avenue or an Anamosa Street, for example, the residential area. So it's not even a major, part of the major street network, network of Rapid City, only services a handful of lots. So should this bridge ever get built in the order of a magnitude of eight million dollars? Kind of reminds me of the Alaska Bridge to Nowhere debacle back about 10 years ago. I think it's fiscally irresponsible for this bridge to ever get built. I understand staff's recommendation to retain this right-of-way to ensure that that, this bridge gets built based on what they've heard from the DOT about, ultimately, the DOT doing away with that bridge over Highway 16. I know the DOT recently made improvements to that bridge, and I think could perhaps last another 15 years, I think, in its present condition. I think that's a number that I heard thrown around with the Tower Road Bridge. And so the staff's doing perhaps what they should be doing, which is ensuring a future connection, given the abandonment of that bridge in roughly 15 years' time. And I guess, again, my point is, is this fiscally responsible use of taxpayer dollars to build this bridge? And my point is, we have 15 years to negotiate with the DOT on redoing the existing bridge, come in some sort of agreement with DOT to redo the bridge, existing bridge over Tower Road, which is half the length of this bridge, okay? I'm no bridge designer like Cale, but I'd like to think that a bridge would be substantially less construction cost at half the length. So my point is, this bridge should never get built. This right-of-way is unnecessary. I don't need the land, I just can't contribute any money towards construction of this, and we have a long time to negotiate with the DOT on a more fiscally responsible solution for access to this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? I don't see any lights up, so I'll go. As noted by the applicant and the consultant, this is a pretty large expenditure to actually make this connection. And this, if I'm not mistaken, this property only goes partway along the path that the connection would take. Does it make any sense to require building a partial connection? You know, you can't build half a bridge. I guess I'm wondering if we have any way to retain the right-of-way but not require any construction from Tower Road, you know, towards Fairmont Boulevard.
So the stipulations of the preliminary subdivision plan say to build Fairmont Boulevard or vacate it, or seek an exception that would waive the requirement to build it today. And that would be our preference, is that we leave that stipulation in place, eliminating the vacation as an option by denying that request. They could then submit the exception request that would go through the Public Works Division with the arguments that you heard today. And then council could decide whether or not the timing of the street construction was imminent today, or should it be something that is entered into an agreement so that everyone collaborates together down the road if it should be that we need that connection? However, in Tony's comment that it's not needed, I do disagree. We have a lot of office commercial property along Tower Road that's not currently developed. We have additional property that's at the north end of the existing Fairmont Boulevard that we've visited with those developers on future development. So we, even if that bridge would stay across Mount Rushmore Road, having to access these properties by going down across Mount Rushmore Road, turning north on Tower Road up by the urgent care facility, circling around is cumbersome, and there are issues with grade on it as well. So certainly, long-term, the best solution would be if both access points would be retained, we wouldn't then enter into a situation like we do with the gap, where it's one way in and one way out. And as we get more and more development, we want to provide those options. So certainly, our preference would be approving the preliminary subdivision plan as stated, because the options are all there, denying the vacation of right-of-way, and allow this discussion to be a part of an exception request to waive the requirement to improve the street as a part of this plat. And I think the discussion that you heard today is exactly what council's going to hear when that exception request goes forward for their consideration.
Thanks, Vicki. Karen, how's the request?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number one, I agree with the request from the staff. Years ago, when the Comfort Inn was first put in there, and that road connection was established, and I don't know if it was established then, but I'm assuming it was at that time. But I remember the discussion at that time saying, will we ever build that road? And we said then that we need to make sure that there's another way in and out of that area, and I think that still holds today. It looks like it's an impossibility to build a bridge or put that road through, but then I look at Catron Boulevard from Highway 16 to Sheridan Lake Road, and that I thought was impossible. And who knows what's going to happen in the next 15 years or so, or 20 years, when we may need this. And so I think we should keep our options open just in case we might need that, and I think the idea of saying, having them go for a request to waive the building of it today and go through the city council is the right avenue to do that. So that's my request.
Kurt. I guess most of my comments have been addressed. You know, I, when I first saw this, you know, I agree with what was brought up with staff and why get rid of one of our options for the future, especially when they don't need the land anyway for their development. Let's leave the right-of-way as it is, give them their exception. We can't expect them to build an eight-million-dollar bridge or even contribute to it. So I guess, let's leave our options open, and especially if that bridge on Mount Rushmore Road goes away, then what do we have? So I'd be in favor of the way it's proposed with, from staff, with granting an exception to improving Fairmont Boulevard.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Vicki.
May I suggest that you take these items separately? And the preliminary subdivision plan, if it's the decision of the planning commission to approve, I would recommend that you approve it with the revised stipulations as handed out today.
Okay.
Yeah, Vicki, I just have a quick question for you. No, you're talking about this potential exception that they could apply for and sit before the city council. Would they have any financial liability for this bridge if the exception is granted? Or is there a portion, or how would that look? I'm just making sure we're not, you know, kind of differing something for the applicant that maybe isn't viable for them in the future.
That will be a discussion as a part of that exception.
Okay.
That I'm sure the applicant will have with the council.
Okay, thank you.
So I agree with Vicki's suggestion that we split these items back up. So item number four is the preliminary subdivision plan. I don't have any other lights up. If there aren't any other questions or comments, I'd like to get a motion on item number four. Okay, Kim made the motion to approve item number four with the revised stipulations. Rachel seconded that motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll go item number 11, which is the vacation of right-of-way. The staff recommendation on this is to deny, as we've discussed. If there aren't any other comments.
I'll make that motion.
Karen made the motion to deny the vacation of right-of-way. Kurt seconded that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Item number six is 17 PD 051, a final planned development to allow a industrial equipment sales and repair establishment. We've seen this property before that, and during this year, it was rezoned from general commercial district to light industrial district in conjunction with a planned development designation. It's the former location of Eddie's Truck Center, and it's going to be the location of Grim's Pump and Industrial. The applicant is not proposing any expansion to the existing building. Phase one will include renovation of the building to, for their industrial sales and repair, and then phase two will include enclosing the outdoor storage area on this north side, adding landscaping and fencing it in and paving some of the circulation. As part of our discussion when it was rezoned from general commercial to light industrial, it was creating some non-conforming issues. So one of the requests is to reduce, is to reduce the minimum required rear yard setback or side yard setback along that north property line where the existing building is from 25 feet to, I believe it's 2.2 feet. Because of the zoning, staff is recommending that the exception for the existing structure Future land use is mixed-use commercial, and East Omaha is identified as a revitalization corridor. The reuse of the existing building and removing some of these barriers to development is supported by the comprehensive plan. You'll notice that to the east, on the east, east of that to the east, on the east, east of Campbell Street, East Omaha, or Omaha is identified as an entrance corridor. But in this area, west of Campbell Street, it is not identified as an entrance corridor. I bring that up because one of the proposals in this is a 44-square-foot electronic reader board sign, which will be located, is proposed to be located on an existing pole sign on the property. East Omaha Street is also identified as a principal arterial street. And here we have a site plan showing phase one, phase two, being the enclosed storage yard. There was some discussion during the rezoning, and when this was rezoned, about landscaping. And the applicant is proposing some additional landscaping beyond what is required of them. And it really will add something to this property and the aesthetics of the property. Here we have the picture of the existing sign, and then where that proposed 44-square-foot electronic reader board sign will be located, and that's on Omaha Street. Some of the client pictures of the existing fencing, lighting, and the pictures of the property interior, the property, that storage area on the north side. When the applicant comes forward with a building permit for paving that, they'll need to identify their circulation and storage areas, because they'll need to pave that circulation aisle. Looking along the west side of the property, across the street, so it is kind of a more industrial area. Looking along Omaha to the west, north along the west side of the property, and Omaha to the east, you can see where that existing pole sign is. And there's a car dealership to the south. Staff's recommendation is to approve the final plan development with stipulations noted, which is granting the exception to reduce the setback, acknowledging the previously granted variance for landscaping. And then if the planning commission determines that the electronic reader board sign is appropriate, then there's a stipulation regarding that. Are there any questions for staff at this time? The applicant's consultant is in the audience as well.
I don't have any questions up on this item.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicky?
If I might. If you guys recall, when this was rezoned to light industrial, there was discussion about whether or not this was appropriate, some concern about what the site would look like, and that's why you see this as a part of a planned development. I just wanted to commend the applicant and his consultant in bringing forward the plan that they did. Obviously, there was a variance granted to reduce the landscape points down to only 30,000 points. But what you see before you is a really beefed-up, well-designed landscape plan that does bring an aesthetic appeal to that portion of the property that abuts Omaha Street. And that was something that we had discussed during the rezone. And I just wanted to point out that that was well-received by us when we saw that plan come in, that they are taking that attempt to at least make that front portion of the property have more of a commercial flavor to it. So I wanted to point it out.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the commission appreciates that as well. This is a good reuse of a building that emptied out. And it's nice that they're making every effort to make it look good. Stolen the lights up? I'd look for a motion on this.
I'll approve it.
Okay, Karen made the motion to approve item number six with the stipulations as noted. Kim seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Item number seven is 17 PD 052, a final plan development to allow an outdoor storage area. Again, this is a property we've seen before, rezoning from general commercial district to light industrial district. This one was approved in conjunction with an initial plan development, and it's for Kiefer sanitation, waste connections. And they're coming forward with their final plan development. Property, there are two off-premise billboard signs that are located on the property. Those are existing. They're looking to enclose it, add some landscaping along that East St. Patrick Street, and fencing for an enclosed storage area. Future land use, again, is mixed-use commercial revitalization corridor. There was a lot of discussion about whether this was the appropriate use in the area. It was determined that this is good development with, because of the existing use on adjacent properties and helping them expand. And then a revitalization corridor, it's supported to improve these types of areas. East St. Patrick Street also identified as a principal arterial street. And here we have a site plan showing the proposed layout. One of the issues staff has identified is that the proposed paved circulation aisle, when a building permit comes in, we'd like to see some truck turning movements that show that they can access the storage area here and along the north without having to travel on gravel. In addition, the applicant should be aware that an air quality permit will be required for moving dirt over an acre in size. And then there's another permit, which is a parking and storage air quality permit, which would need to be removed or renewed every three years if the gravel storage area exceeds an acre in size. You know, so what we would almost prefer to see is a horseshoe-shaped circulation aisle, so they could easily access storage areas around that without having to drive on gravel and kick up dust and other things. Here we have the proposed landscape plan, showing a 25-foot landscape buffer along East St. Patrick Street. And you can see the fence, which will attach to fencing on the property to the west, and go around, connecting this to the rest of the development. One of the things that's changed that we liked is adding this buffer along this east property line with some trees in it. You'll notice in the stipulations of approval that upon submission of a building permit, the applicant should coordinate with the Rapid City Urban Forester on the types of plantings being proposed, because some of the, I believe it's the ash trees are not recommended along a corridor like this. So picking out those plantings which are appropriate for this area, and, you know, being in Rapid City in South Dakota. The applicant is proposing a seven-foot-high black poly-coated chain-link fence with barbed wire and green plastic slats. This is showing the applicant's photos showing what's being proposed. Some of the lighting, some of the applicant's photos. This is a photo looking into the property from the east. You can see the billboard signs. The existing development to the west. One of the things identified on the Rapid City bicycle and pedestrian plan is a 10-foot-wide side path along the north side of East St. Patrick Street. That's not required. So the applicant's proposing what is required, which is a five-foot sidewalk. But just so everyone's aware, that it is identified on the bicycle pedestrian plan for 10-foot. Looking west along St. Pat, to the south, where we have some low-density residential district. So definitely that landscaping and screening should provide a buffer, looking to the east along East St. Patrick Street and the adjacent commercial use next to the property. Interior, looking at some of the existing storage that's to the north. And then looking at the west property line and the existing fencing. And here we see some of the existing chain-link with slats that they're going to be tying this proposed fence into. The light industrial district does allow a seven-foot-high chain-link fence with slats. Staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. And the applicant's consultant is available if there are any questions for them, or are there questions for staff at this time?
Thank you, Fletcher. Kurt?
I didn't see anywhere in there where it said what they were going to store. Is it trucks? Is it garbage? Is it recycled goods?
Good morning. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fiscal Land Surveying. I'm here on behalf of Waste Connections. The materials to be stored are the large containers, like the oversized haul-off containers. So they're going to be real large containers, and they're just going to use that as an overflow storage area. And they don't anticipate having to access it really frequently. It's going to be more of a, you know, long-term, where they access those, maybe they take them to a construction site, you know, so they're on a construction site for a long time. So it's not like a daily going in and out and removing of these things. It's much more minimal use than like your average containers, small ones that get used on a daily basis.
Is there anything in this approval or denial that would limit what is stored there? I mean, can we have open garbage blown around, you know, big pallets of tin cans and, you know, that kind of stuff?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicky?
So the light industrial district identifies the kinds of uses that you could have, and storage for any of those uses would be anticipated. Please note that because this is in a planned development, we go to the very nature of the business. It would be storage for that business. As a part of their operational plan, they've identified that the storage would be used for these storage containers. We will include that in the file, so that any additional or different storage for a use outside of what's being presented today would be something that we could come back and look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. First, I want to commend the fact that they're doing some great landscaping. I think that's going to improve that area, and it'll make that seem not so industrial, I think, if you have some landscaping there. My question, I guess, is Fletcher, did you say that they're going to have a five-foot sidewalk?
Yes, that's what's required.
Okay. Because I think that's important, too, to keep that connection going. And I would like to see it farther down. But you can see the walking paths, so people use that area. So I think that's good. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is, the only other thing I'm not crazy about is the slatted, or slats for that chain-link fence. I've never been an advocate of that. I just don't think that's as nice-looking as it could be. I think, you know, a different type of fencing would be better. But if the landscaping is such that it would cover that slatted fence, that would be helpful. So it depends on how tall those bushes are and those trees in that area. And I'm sure that they'll keep it watered, so it doesn't die out there. So that's my comments, anyway. And I'm sure, Janelle, you're going to tell me that they've got slats on the other side, so it kind of fits. But, you know, that's just my personal feeling about the slats. So, thank you.
If I could comment. I asked my clients to find some other kind of fence that was appropriate for the area, because I knew that this would be a conversation. And one of the things that I learned along the way is, I said, you need to examine things like maybe a mesh or a fabric slat, or something that's a little different. And apparently, there is a difference in terms of like commercial slats, plastic slats, versus like residential that you might see in a yard, where sometimes they have breakage. They have issues with maintenance on the mesh or the fabric. It's not, it doesn't, it's not very secure, and you have to tie it off in different places with attaching it to the fence. And the attachments don't last very long, and so it becomes a maintenance issue. They work their way loose in the wind. They said they have never had any issues with breakage or wind noise with their existing commercial slats that they have around the fence area. And the fact that, yes, it is buffered by the landscape material, and there's quite a bit of landscaping material there, of varied heights and varied, you know, varied vegetation. So you're going to get upper and lower coverage. And believe me, I asked them to examine the options, and they did, and said that none of the others are really as suitable as what they're proposing. So that's where we are today.
If I may. Okay, thanks, Janelle. I have one other question. I noticed in the writing that there's going to be a barbed wire on the top. Is that still going to be there? And that's allowable in that zoning? Okay. I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Fitz?
Thank you. If I can get back to the sidewalks for just a second, or the bike path in particular. The 10-foot bike path, what's, where was that, where's it supposed to be?
The bicycle and pedestrian plan adopted by Rapid City identifies that a 10-foot-wide bicycle and pedestrian path would be located along that north side of East St. Patrick Street, so in front of this property. However, it's not required as part of development of the property, so we can't require them to put in a 10-foot-wide sidewalk. But they are, what is required is the five-foot-wide sidewalk along the commercial corridor. So that's what they are proposing, although we just wanted it to be recognized that it is identified as being supported in this area.
Okay. And so that sidewalk, it looks like it's just going to end there, where that footpath is going to take over. But isn't that the same property owned by the same people?
To the west? Yes, it is.
Will they consider extending that sidewalk?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicky?
We might let Janelle speak to her applicant's intent. However, per ordinance, if they should ever come in for a building permit on that property that's adjacent, then it would be required that they provide the sidewalk at that time. Typically, with other developers that do own several properties in a row, they provide the sidewalk as it's required by code. In this case, they're getting a building permit. It's required as a part of this phase of the development.
That would be their intent. And understanding is that as permits would come forward for other properties that they continuously own, that they would need to do the sidewalk as part of those permits. But today, we're only talking about this particular area and the use of these two lots.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Rachel?
Yeah, I kind of want to go back to the barbed-wire fencing at the top. I understand that there's barbed-wire fencing on the top of, you know, some of the other fences, as we saw in the pictures. But we're not really talking about those fences. I probably would ask that those wouldn't have barbed wire either. Is it possible for us to just deny the request for barbed wire at the top, just because?
Mr. Chair?
Vicky?
So one of the concerns that we had in zoning, rezoning this to light industrial is that the design characteristics are different than general commercial. So here we are. It's light industrial, and this type of fencing is permitted in the light industrial district. For you to deny them the right to use their property in a way that anyone else could use in light industrial, you'd have to cite some specific criteria that is of your right to do through the planned development, that would cite that it would be injurious to the neighborhood or cause safety issues, in that there would be some special circumstance that this light industrial property wouldn't be allowed, what all the other light industrial properties had the right to assume they could do.
Okay. So I don't know if this counts, but, you know, in looking at this, when I was reading the agenda, you know, I understand that East St. Pat is, it's a revitalization corridor. So, and I remember, I seem to remember in the discussion we had when the zoning came through, that we were talking about potential development in other areas that would use this street. So this is going to have more residential use in the future, if my memory serves. Just the combination of, you know, the fact that it's going to be revitalization, that we're hoping to make this more attractive for people entering the town, that this is coming from, this is like one of two ways to come from the airport to downtown, you know- that this is coming from, this is like one of two ways to come from the airport to downtown, you know, things like that. I just, I wonder if there's any way that we could, you know, the landscaping is great, the lighting is great. You know, you're going with the Dark Sky Initiative lighting. I think that's fantastic. I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could kind of, you know, would the applicant consider not putting in the barbed wire?
I believe that they consider the barbed wire to be a security issue, and it's extremely typical of industrial areas that have enclosed storage. When you have a large yard like this, if you don't have the barbed wire on the top, people can infiltrate and do all kinds of things that they shouldn't do, and cross the property, and hide out somewhere in the back of containers that they shouldn't hide in, and so it becomes a matter of securing your property and making sure that you don't have any issues with that. And I believe that the landscaping that we proposed is going to obscure the barbed wire. I don't think you're going to see it by the time it reaches reasonable maturity, and it is back, again, it's 25 feet back from the edge of the property line, not the traveled way of the street, so you're 40 feet back from the edge of the street, and by the time you get the landscaping, I don't think you're going to see it.
Okay, thank you.
Good comments. I have no other lights up. Is there anybody ready to make a motion on this item? Okay, Kim made the motion to approve this item per the staff's stipulations. Mike seconded that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight?
Item number eight is a preliminary subdivision plan to create 18 lots. These would be residential lots, and this is located on the south side of Katron Boulevard, west of Mount Rushmore Road, just across from the entrance into the Golden Eagle Development that sits along Vineyard. With that, I will show you some slides. Not too many meetings ago, you folks rezoned this property to low-density residential district, which was in compliance with our comprehensive plan for the area. We had suspended it to have discussions with the applicant about access and utilities, and they did bring forward some preliminary information. We then supported the rezone. You folks ultimately sent forward that recommendation to the city council. And as a part of this preliminary subdivision plan, they have shown how the street networking and utilities would, in concept, be proposed. An aerial of the property, currently, there is no development on the parcel. You'll see just to the west of this is a large, beautiful home. Here, a few years ago, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow a bed and breakfast on that site. You'll see the outline of the cul-de-sac access that serves as access to the bed and breakfast. That is actually an easement that was created, and then, at one point, there were two lots platted, and they ultimately got vacated, but the underlying easement was retained. As a part of what we're going to see as a new layout for the parcel to the east, it redesigns their access point. Low-density residential is the current zoning. You can see that Katron Boulevard is a principal arterial street. All of the streets existing and proposed interior would be residential streets. If you look at, let me see if I can point this out. It's a little hard to see on the aerial here. So the existing easement comes up, comes around, and then cul-de-sacs. And here is the entrance point to the bed and breakfast. That property owner has been in contact with staff on numerous occasions, concerned with this layout, noting that they were not in support of moving their access point from where it currently is. They've got quite a grand entrance established on their property to invite their guests as a part of their bed and breakfast. We had shared that with the applicant and the consultant, and you'll see one of the stipulations of approval is that they coordinate with the adjacent property owner prior to altering that access. And we would like to commend that property owner, the applicant, with working with that property owner. It's our understanding that they have reached out to start those conversations. Showing the development of the property in phases. This is looking west on Katron Boulevard, east on Katron Boulevard, looking south into the property and Howgo Drive, the existing access point is very, it's got a pretty good grade on it. The applicant is bringing forward plans to improve this portion of the access as well. This is onsite looking south, and that's the Copper Ridge Apartments that are over by our fire station along Highway 16. And the views from this property are phenomenal. It's going to be, makes up for some great residential building lots. Again, looking more northwest, looking into the site, and it shows the existing what's going to let me draw, shows the existing easement. And that's the one that the adjacent property owner would like to work with the applicants before that gets redesigned. You can see here, too, the entrance. These are some lions sitting on top of those posts. So, we had put this on non-consent today, just for the purposes of identifying to the adjacent property owner that has been watching this very closely, that we, in visiting with the applicant and his consultant, that there needs to be collaboration on all parts as this project comes forward, and there might be a better design of that access road that would allow their entrance to stay where it's at, still allowing them the densities that would be supported in low-density residential district. I would like to say that the lots do range in size from almost a quarter acre to over half an acre, so that's significantly larger than what you would usually see in a low-density residential development. But these building sites are going to create some very beautiful building envelopes, and I would assume that that's the caliber of housing we're going to see out there, too. So if you have any questions for me, otherwise, we're recommending that this item be approved with the stipulations as noted.
Karen?
I just have a quick question. Katron Boulevard eventually is going to be widened to, I think, at a lane or something. Do you know when that's going to happen?
Ted, is there any information on that?
That's tentatively planned for 2018, so next year.
Okay.
Should bid this winter or spring.
Good. Well, thank you. I think that'll help as far as the traffic is concerned, because that was one of our concerns when we did that, so thank you.
I have no other lights up to speak. If any other comments, questions, anything? Rachel made the motion to approve this item with stipulations. Is there a second? Kim seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine?
Good morning. Sarah Hansel, Division of Long Range Planning. Item number nine is a rezoning request affiliated with a recent annexation of property that is located north of Sheridan Lake Road and southwest of the intersection of Dunsmore Road and Port Rush Road. Here is an aerial view of the property. You can see that it is currently undeveloped. It's about six and a half acres in size. Directly south of this property are commercial storage units that are located within the county's jurisdiction, and directly north are three twin-home units. Go back this way. This is showing the zoning for the property with it have its county zoning currently until it's rezoned from no-use district after the annexation. It's got a planned unit development designation in the county, and the surrounding uses are low-density residential and general agriculture. This is the future land use of the property, which is mixed-use commercial. And this is a major street plan, showing Sheridan Lake Road. Primary access to this property is a principal arterial. Dunsmore Road, which forms the eastern boundary of this property, is a minor arterial road, and Port Rush Road to the north is a collector street. And then I'll also point out, too, with the future land use category, it doesn't read this is an activity center designation. When you look at this area kind of from a wider lens out, this really is kind of a commercial hub for this area, surrounded extensively by low-density residential development. Here's the exhibit that was submitted with the application. And I'll take you through some site photos here. This is looking south towards Sheridan Lake Road from Dunsmore Street. And here, we're looking east across into the residential development. Just a view out into the property. You can't see the storage commercial, the commercial storage units from this view. This is looking then west down towards those twin homes. Further, and then this is actually the adjacent property, which is item number 10 on the agenda, just so you're aware, there are two portions of property requesting for a rezone today. But here, you get a view of those commercial storage units. And looking at the future land use designation for this property is mixed-use commercial. It's adjacency to a minor arterial street, and it's close proximity to the activity center. As staff was reviewing this application, our recommendation would be to approve the request to office-commercial district. And you can open it up for discussion and any questions that you might have, and I believe there are audience members here who may wish to speak to this, and also the consultant is here.
Thanks, Sarah. I do have a number of speaker request forms. Does anybody have a question for Sarah at this point? With that, then, we'll move to the speaker requests. I do ask, please don't go into too much detail, repeating things that have already been said. We try to listen as best we can, but we do want to hear your opinions on this item. We'll start with Barbara Horton. And I would add, just to help our minutes taking, please identify yourself once you're up at the microphone. Thanks.
I'm Barbara Horton. I live over in the Red Rock neighborhood. And I do have a large concern about putting in office-commercial in that area. First of all, I'd like to mention that Dunsmore is not a minor arterial road. It is the major road from Sheridan Lake Road all the way down into, into the meadows, Red Rock Meadows. And they are currently building 80-plus properties, homes, single-family homes, at the end of Dunsmore. So this is a one-way in, one-way out. They did put a stoplight at Sheridan Lake and Dunsmore in order to help the traffic flow for early morning and then the evening. But this is a one-way major road to get into that neighborhood, especially with all the new homes that are being put at the end. During my research, I found that it is possible, if this changes to the office-commercial district, that at some point in the future, that the developers could put in apartments. So they don't have to come back to the planning and zoning to then put in apartments in at some future date. And this is a family neighborhood. So these are the concerns that I have about putting in offices in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next one I have is from Carolyn Johnson.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Johnson. I live on Port Rush. I live in one of those three townhouses the property in question backs up to. My concern, my biggest concern at this point is privacy. If we have an office parking lot that backs up to my property, then that parking lot is only a few yards from my back door. And I have animals that are out. My neighbors have animals that are out, and I just am not very excited at all about having a parking lot or an office building that backs up to just 10 or 15, 20 yards from my back door. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Dietrich.
Good morning. My name's Alan Dietrich. I live at 6943 Ainsdale Court, which is actually one of the Red Rock townhomes. I'm here as an individual owner and also as a board member on the Red Rock Town Home Association. I'm here principally to talk about item 10, and I'll reserve my comments to that till we get to that item. But some of the comments that I had with regard to that also carry over into this item. And those comments are, as the people have already stated, a little bit on the traveling and the road access to the whole Red Rock area. As they said, there's a new development north of Poppy Trail. There's continued development in the Red Rock along Golf Course Hole Number Four, in, south of Poppy Trail, which is an east-west road on the north end of Dunsmore. So there's going to be quite a bit of additional traffic to the traffic that's already there. And in looking at some of the staff items, and how long-term we're looking at getting all of these people in and out of the Red Rock area, I did see a road, it's called a proposed principal arterial road, which seems to go east at the end of Port Rush Road, and then curve and join Sheridan Lake Road at some point to the east, and I think it's, perhaps you can bring that up. Right now, the only two ways in and out of the whole Red Rock area are Murfield Road, or Murfield Drive, and Dunsmore. And, and so one of the concerns is, how are we going to get in and out? They have placed a stoplight at the corner of Dunsmore and Sheridan Lake Road. That's kind of that corner pantry intersection there that also leads to Moon Meadows. I guess my concern is, you know, what is the long-term plan for access? We recently had a home fire out there. I know there was a lot of trouble getting the fire trucks in and out to serve that, that house fire that was in the meadows. That dotted line that you can see to the right side is, shows Port Rush Road as it curves around to the northeast, then would, would move out into some farmland and go through that farmland down to Sheridan Lake Road. Until the other day, when I saw this, I had no idea that that was the proposed road out. I thought perhaps the access, the additional access could come north or straight east from Poppy Trail. But I guess that's the principal issue that I have with respect to the item number nine, from our point of view. Just to give you some clarification, I don't know how you point with that. This is Ainsdale Court, as you can see.
If you draw on it, it'll keep pressing down and it'll draw.
Which do I have to touch?
See if it's working. There you go, yeah.
Okay, here is Ainsdale Court. And I actually live in the townhouse that is the last half of the last townhouse on the south end of the west side of Ainsdale. So I'm directly across from the next property. So principally, my comments are going to be with respect to that proposed rezoning. But all of us face the same traffic issues in getting in and out of Red Rock. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Kampf. Hopefully I got the last name right.
My name is Mark Kampfey. I live at 6817 Dunsmore Road, which is right north of this intersection of Dunsmore and Port Rush. I second and third the people that spoke previous to me, especially with the ingress-egress out of that area. As Barbara said, Dunsmore is not a secondary road. It is the main road. And it is narrower than the road that I think was originally plotted to be the ingress-egress main arterial, which is Cog Hill, which nobody uses, period. We had numerous heavy trucks hauling and excavating material out of that building site. So I think that's our biggest, my biggest concern is the ingress-egress out of there. Secondary concern, as somebody stated, is the proposal to possibly add apartments. There are no apartments in that area whatsoever. The nearest apartments are the ones that were stated and shown earlier on Catron and also the ones that what I call the mega apartment complex between Catron and 16. So this would be a real change in my view of what a single-family home district would be, would be to add these apartments. So I would like you to consider those two objections when you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Bedard.
My name's Bruce Bedard. I live at 4451 Port Rush, which is one of those three twin homes that my backyard butts up against the land that they're considering for the rezoning. I do support the rezoning. As stated here with a lot of folks, I'm not a big fan of those large boxy apartment buildings. We live in an area where there's very expensive and very beautiful homes out there. We have a community that is very tight-knit. Adding twin homes back there, rezoning for the twin homes is a great idea. I know the builder will take into consideration the beautiful section that we live in and our views when they're designing these homes. I cannot see any buildings back there where we'd be butted up against a parking lot, like a Home Depot or anything along those lines. With this community, the way it is set up now and the expansion, I do support the expansion. But I also do hope that everyone considers the beauty of the area. And we're right, I think Red Rock's golf course is one of the top-rated golf courses in South Dakota. Well-maintained, well-taken care of. And I believe having twin homes back there, beautiful twin homes, maybe even some single-family homes in that area would be a great addition to our community and to Rapid City. And lastly, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate that. Kyle Trelor.
Kyle Trelor with KTM Design Solutions. I'm here to represent the owner, who couldn't be here because of the holiday. Just a couple points, I think, to bring up. This is, we've worked very closely with the city staff on this, and we've made, you know, we've looked at the future land use plan, the goals that have been identified in that and in creating this core through this area and maintaining some of these uses. Some of the ideas that were talked about were, you know, with what this is designated, you know, we have general commercial as an option. We have the office commercial zoning. The office commercial zoning allows us to maintain those residential uses and be, you know, cognizant of the nature of this neighborhood. I'm going to kind of speak to the other side a little bit too, since we're here, it's all one property being rezoned together. With that rezone, I also thank the Planning Commission for letting us hear both of them at the same time. Initially, we had come in with a request to rezone the west half of this property at MDR, working with staff, taking into account the comments that we received back on that. We have moved that to the LDR2 designation that really fits that townhome feel. Couple other points, I know traffic is a key concern here. One of the things that we are doing with this, this annexation, is we are bringing this into the city. With that, we're dedicating additional right-of-ways to make sure that these corridors are preserved, that these additional lanes can be built when appropriate. With the nature of what the owner is doing, he is not intending on developing that himself. This is, in some sense, you know, cleaning up the estate for the family. With that, you know, we are creating that, dedicating these right-of-ways, rezoning it, you know, per city staff's direction, per what they would like to see as the owners of this property. And I can make myself available for any other questions that may come up.
Thank you. Back to us up here. Questions or comments? Rachel.
Yeah, I think, you know, I was listening to comments, and I know a lot of people have concerns about the properties that might, you know, what this rezoning might mean. So I just wanted to make sure to look into the zoning and make sure that I was aware of what might be done with these properties. And I was looking at office commercial. And, you know, I noticed with office commercial, someone was mentioning that her townhome, her yard would, you know, butt this property, and she's concerned about, you know, what would that do with her backyard? Office commercial seems really appropriate use here because it says, you know, it's building groups surrounded by landscaped yards and open areas. Aesthetic requirements of these uses make desirable either central location or suburban location near residential neighborhoods. So office commercial really is a zone that I think is appropriate for this area. I think it should be, you know, aesthetically pleasing. I think, you know, when you have a big open lot, it's a bummer when it gets developed. It just is, you know. But we can't really say, don't develop it, and this is appropriate for the area. So that's, I think that's why I'm in favor of this rezone, because I think it actually will be a good thing for the area. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Kurt.
You know, there's a lot of concern about Dunsmore Road and the traffic on there. And I do see, according to the major street plan, it's classified as a minor arterial. Is Dunsmore constructed to a minor arterial standards? Ted?
Thank you, sir. No, I do not believe it is not fully designed to that standard. There's not adequate right-of-way at this time. It's in 66 feet. I do not believe there's curb and gutter.
So it's not wide enough?
It's not wide enough. It doesn't have all the stuff.
All right. And the other question I had, and I don't know who can answer it, but the density of the, you know, the number of lots that are served by that entrance in and out, does it exceed the current requirements for how many lots are served with the one entrance in and out? Or does Mirfield, and the combination of Mirfield and Dunsmore, take that into consideration so that we're not exceeding the densities for one-way in, one-way out?
Thank you. I don't know that I can totally answer that. There are two accesses to Red Rock's area. Dunsmore is not the only access. It's basically the primary access. It seems to be used by most of the people, but it is one of two current accesses to that. Future development should provide more accesses, but that's out and unknown when that would be there. But I can't answer the exact carrying capacity of that street. I didn't look at that, I'm sorry, I don't know. I didn't look at the exact design of the street to see what's appropriate for that.
And there were also some concerns about emergency access. Tim, is there issues with that?
Thank you. At this time, you know, we're always concerned about the densities of traffic and congestion, but that's pretty typical throughout our city. The Red Rocks area is not necessarily an exception to that. The Sahili Fire we experienced a couple, a month ago, we actually had a response time in that roughly about that six-minute range, which is pretty remarkable given the area that it was in. So it's a concern, but not in this particular instance. Adequate access is provided.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else.
Thanks, Kurt. Karen?
Thank you. When you have, excuse me, when you have a commercial storage units in the area just south of this property, it makes it kind of difficult to say, well, let's put single-family homes there. So I think the office commercial is appropriate. It kind of goes from commercial to less commercial to residential. And that's good planning. That's what planners strive to do. So I think the zoning is correct for this item. My thought is, so I know that apartments can go into office commercial uses, you're going to use it for MDR status. And I think if it was done with maybe a couple buildings that are not very high, that blend in with the neighborhood, I think it would be appropriate. But if we don't have a tool to say you can't put a big box apartment there, I can see the neighborhood not liking that. Is there a way that we can add a planned development to this particular property so that we can make some stipulations on that?
Thanks, Karen. Yes, the Planning Commission can make the recommendation for approval with that stipulation if that's what the Planning Commission is comfortable deciding on.
Okay. And then in that case, we could limit the height through a planned development if we wanted to?
That's correct.
Okay. I just think that would be appropriate. That gives the neighborhood some, you know, ability to see what's going to happen there in the future, whether it's an office setting or an apartment setting. And as Kyle said, this is not going to be developed by the property owner, it's going to go somebody else. And so we don't know what somebody else buying it will think about. And I would hope that they would take into consideration the surrounding neighborhood and the quality of homes out there, but you never know. And so I just think that'd be appropriate, to put that designation on there for the future.
Thanks, Karen. Rachel?
Yeah, I think this question is for staff. If this area is developed, you know, and I like the planned development designation, I think that's a good compromise. But if this area is developed, could that trigger some sort of improvements on Dunsmore Road that might address some of the concerns of the neighborhood?
Based on the size of the lot and the anticipated uses associated with that zoning district, we don't anticipate that development would trigger a traffic impact study for this particular six-and-a-half acres, correct?
Do we, I mean, are these issues going to be addressed anytime soon with Dunsmore Road and the width and, you know, some of the issues that the neighborhood has talked about? Maybe not specific to this project, but just a question for you specifically.
Kyle, do you want to speak to the plotting, the dedication of additional right-of-way that you mentioned?
This is real quick, this isn't going to necessarily answer what your question is here, but with the Dunsmore Road, it is constructed to the width of an arterial. What it's short on right now is the required right-of-way. And with this development, we will be dedicating that additional right-of-way to bring this into arterial street standards. So just a quick update on that.
Okay, so it sounds like the issues with Dunsmore don't really have to do with this project specifically, but are more a concern for the city, it sounds like. Is that, am I kind of getting that correctly? Because they are designating right-of-ways so that when Dunsmore is improved, that, you know, that space is available.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I guess I would echo that, just the general question. We've been seeing over time pieces of this area being developed with no additional connections. And I don't, I think this falls in that area between public works and planning, but is there, could either of you comment on just future possible connections in this area?
Is that a good answer? There's planned development. The stuff going to the north is part of development of a future property that has connections to the west and around farther on Sheridan Lake Road. But those are all planned. I mean, they're in the works, they're in future works. There is no timetable that I know of to improve or provide any additional connections, like the major street plan. That's the adjacent property owner. We don't know what his plans are, but I don't believe there are any imminent plans to do that. What we've got is kind of what we're working with at this time. Dunsmore Road is somewhat of a concern because it's in the county, but it's not county jurisdiction, or they don't claim jurisdiction to it. It's not a city street, non-city limits. There are some issues with jurisdiction and funding. So it's not ideal, but there are discussions to try to promote that, but nothing's pending at this time.
Can I just add something? Several years ago, we did a traffic study, actual corridor alignment to make a connection from Sheridan Lake Road to 44. Council approved, not really approved the alignment, but they approved the study itself. But the option that was identified for that area was an emergency evacuation plan for Chapel Valley instead of making the connection forward. So, you know, I know that at this moment, we don't have that connection secured on the major street plan, but we see that imminent at some point in the future. We're going to have to re-study that because of the issues that we see on Sheridan Lake Road.
Thank you. I would encourage that. I think it's well past time to get some plans in place. Kurt?
I guess I must have misunderstood what Ted said earlier when I asked about Dunsmore being a minor arterial. Kyle just said that Dunsmore is built, that the actual road is built to minor arterial It's just the right-of-way that isn't, doesn't meet.
I would defer to Kyle. I haven't been down there and looked at it. I did not think it was fully built. Took them actual, but I don't, are arterial street standard. I don't know pavement width. I don't know if it's all curb and gutter. I did not check that, so I would defer to Kyle.
With, and what I'll do, and I don't have a copy of the staff report here, but we have previously submitted a subdivision plan to create the lots that go with this annexation and with this rezone. With that... annexation and with this rezone. With that, staff had went out there, made the look, and like you see on all of these subdivision plans, they look at the widths of the roads. And what came back is their recommendation is that, yes, it had been built to the arterial standards. And I'm talking about the road width, the curb and gutter, but there was not adequate right-of-way. So it was short on having that full hundred-foot right-of-way. And so what the staff report identified was that additional right-of-way needed to be dedicated for that street and that it was built to current standards.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would also encourage the, I guess, getting this either into the city or the county, Dunsmore in particular. We can't do anything as far as this application, obviously, and the Planning Commission can't do anything. But we have a large area of city that is served by this road. So it would seem that the city might want to take it over. But that's neither here nor there. I have no more lights up on this item. I guess at this point, I'd look for a motion if there is one. Karen?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the rezone, but add a planned development to that if, that will work with everybody up here. And that's my motion.
So Karen made the motion to approve the rezoning from no-use district to office commercial district for item number nine with the addition of stipulation that adds a planned development designation to this parcel. Is there a second to that motion?
Vince?
Okay. Vince seconded that motion. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. Then we'll move to item number ten.
Okay. Item number ten is for the six-acre lot located immediately west of item number nine. The request for this property is to rezone from no-use district to low-density residential district two. And as Kyle had mentioned earlier, the original application for this rezone was to medium-density residential, which was withdrawn and resubmitted as low-density residential district two. So this district would be associated with town home unit development, similar to that which is seen in the area currently. We're going to see some similar graphics for this area. This property has frontage along Meerefield Drive and also Port Rush Drive. Here's the aerial view of the property. This future land use category for this is low-density neighborhood. And here's the major street plan again. I'll take you through the site photos. Here you see the eastern edge of the property, proximity to the storage units. Here's looking west, down towards Meerefield Drive. Here, we're at the intersection of Meerefield Drive and Port Rush, looking north, looking back towards the property across Port Rush. And then looking south, back towards Sheridan Lake Road from Meerefield Drive. Similarly, for this property, the requested rezone is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, the future land use designation. And we see development within this district being very compatible with what is there today, and we are recommending that this rezone request be approved.
Thanks, Sarah. Most of the speaker request forms were for both items nine and ten. If you would like to speak on item ten particularly as well, I'd invite you up. Just raise your hand. Alan?
Thank you. As I said earlier, this item is the one that I had principally come here to speak about. And as you can see, it's directly across the road from where I live. This land area was identified as low-density residential in the, a low-density residential neighborhood in the April 2014 Rapid City Comprehensive Plan. I was pleased to see the redesignation of the request for medium-density residential, low-density residential district two, which is more consistent with what we have out there now. I still have some concerns. I'm not opposing the rezoning. I'm requesting that this area also receive a planned development designation so that when they move forward with their plans, we have an opportunity to speak to those plans. One of the notes in the staff note says, "There may be a plan to accommodate housing formats not explicitly allowed in LDR two." And I'm not sure what that means. I assume what that means is, in addition to single-family homes and twin homes, there may be other types of homes that will be requested. One of the people who would be a potential developer has mentioned to our association that they may build a row house on the southern portion of this property. In other words, instead of a two-unit dwelling, it would be a multi-dwelling unit. May not be objectionable, but in talking to other members of our association, at a minimum, they would like to see only twin homes or homes similar to the ones we have along Port Rush. And I'm not certain exactly how they're planning to build a road into this new property, or how they're going to lay out the potential development. We haven't seen any of those plans yet. But I would, myself, favor the rezoning to LDR two. I think that's consistent. The issue of what's going to be, attempted to be built in that LDR two is something that I'd like an opportunity to talk about in the future, and that would hopefully be present in a planned development designation. So just as you did for the other one, I would ask that you, if you approve this, you do it with that designation.
Thanks, Alan.
Just one point of clarification. When they were talking about Dunsmore Road, Dunsmore Road is fairly wide from Sheridan Lake Road to Port Rush, and then it narrows as it goes north through the twin homes in the meadows. So Dunsmore Road is fairly wide from Port Rush south, but it narrows as it goes north. And, you know, I think that's part of the problem and the concerns of those homeowners along Dunsmore, is that there's an awful lot of truck traffic, heavy traffic coming up Dunsmore. And I've already spoken to my concerns about the egress and egress, so I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Barbara. Barbara, do you mind if I, just so I don't forget, Sarah, Alan's comment about other types of housing that may be in an LDR two, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I'm looking back over my staff report for this item, and I'm wondering if that may be language from the original staff report when the request was for medium-density residential district.
Still was present in the latest, the latest document I can find online, still talked about potentially other homes. And I'm not certain if the plan is have twin homes and then, you know, layer into other homes, but that's a direct quote from the staff report.
I'm wondering if that was one that would be linked up to the previous agenda that was on here, because we're just anticipating the LDR two. There wasn't a reference to diversified housing types be above and beyond what would be allowed in LDR two.
The current recommendation of rezoning to LDR two, LDR two would only allow a typically-built twin home, correct?
Yes.
If they wanted a different form of housing in that district, they would have to come back for essentially a rezoning at that point, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara?
Well, that helped to answer my concern. I do agree with Alan. I'm very happy that they went from medium density to low density in that area. And what they plan in that area would be very conforming to what's already there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Mark?
Mark Camp again. I asked the city, would they ever consider putting another stoplight at the corner of Meerefield and Sheridan Lake to essentially give people an alternative? I know there's two stoplights very close together and probably wouldn't consider it. But everybody, now that the stoplight is funneled down Dunsmore Road, and the previous speaker correctly stated that Dunsmore Road north of Port Rush, Dunsmore intersection is much narrower than the Dunsmore Road going south to Sheridan Lake. Would the city ever consider some temporary speed bumps on Dunsmore Road during the city season of summer through fall? Take them up during the winter so you can plow the road? It is a raceway, folks. It is absolutely, there's nobody that goes twenty-five miles an hour there. And somebody's going to get hurt there, is my concern. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'd refer the first part to Ted. I think Sheridan Lake Road at that area is a highway, though am I correct or incorrect on that? So DOT would have input into another light?
But it, right now, just looking at spacing is marginal. I don't know the other factors or warrants. I don't know if we've studied that. We are doing an analysis of that Sheridan Lake corridor underway that will maybe provide some more insight on that.
Okay.
And I, as far as speed bumps, I don't know what to say about that request. Do you have any?
I defer to our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's all I would say. I form an opinion on that.
Bruce?
Thank you. I think a lot of the concerns that the folks have about getting in and out of this area, a lot of it would have to do with going from this area heading into Rapid City, the S-curves, down Sheridan Lake Road that head down to Catron. That's a major issue, especially during the winter. You can look at your records. You can see that a lot of the vehicles go off that road and down a ravine. The speed limit may need to be adjusted, but I think widening that road, or even putting an access out the back of the housing area, would relieve some of that. But the congestion at the corner of Sheridan Lake Road and Catron is a major issue. We've sat through five light cycles trying to get through that intersection, coming out of our area in the morning, because folks are trying to get their kids to school. Of course, people are going to work at that hour of the day. So, and I know this is a little bit off track with the rezoning, but I appreciate your time. But this is something that I think needs to be considered in a lot of cases. When folks talk about the racetrack down Dunsmore, very true. Very true. But access into the housing area and access from that housing area in a different location that might relieve some of that congestion at Sheridan Lake Road and Catron would be something that we need to also consider if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, would you like to speak again?
I just want to say that I too am grateful that you changed this to low-density. I think most of us can probably deal with that. But I would like to point out that Port Rush is also a raceway. If you want to go from Red Rock Estates to Red Rock Meadows, Port Rush is, and you don't want to, you're not getting on Sheridan Lake Road, Port Rush is the only road in Red Rock that connects Red Rock Meadows and Red Rock Estates. So it too is a raceway.
Thank you. I don't think we have any other audience members, so I'll go to Rachel.
I just want to make this real brief. I understand this raceway issue is a big deal. We've had the same sort of situation in my street. We're kind of by Stevens High School in certain times of the day. That becomes a major issue. And then, some of my neighbors, before we moved into the neighborhood, some of my neighbors somehow lobbied the city to put in speed bumps and found that people were driving on the sidewalks to avoid the speed bumps. So then we had to, after that, push the city to put signs, no parking signs, which worked because there's no parking in part of our street. We had to get them to put no parking signs on the sidewalks so people would no longer drive on the sidewalks. So I just wanted to say I completely empathize with this. It's a big deal. And now people will just honk while they go over the speed bumps. Some people really don't like speed bumps for some reason. And it's not just teenagers. I've caught people who are fifty and sixty years old honking as they go over the speed bumps, which we're putting in place to protect our kids. So, but anyway, I don't know the process towards addressing that issue. Can someone, maybe staff, do you know who they can talk to? Is it talking to city council? Is it going to be tricky because we don't really know who owns this street? Can anyone make a comment so that these folks can have some direction?
Well, my guess is Dunsmore north of Port Rush is a city street, so the traffic division or streets division would be the place to start, right, Ted?
That would be correct. Start with a traffic engineer, city traffic engineer, and then public works director, I suppose. City council may be an option for Dunsmore south. You know, it's kind of in limbo. I would note that the city people in Red Rock Estates, Red Rocks, also pay county taxes. So there's some possibly shared liability, but that, I can't answer that. I know it's been talked about, but I'm not in that loop, and it's still out there and in the gray area.
I guess that would be my second request, is listen, John, and take it into consideration at all possible. Further questions or comments on item number ten from the commission? Rachel made the motion to approve item number ten, the rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential district two.
Second.
Karen seconded that motion. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We've covered item number eleven earlier. Takes us to the end of our regular agenda. Is there a, got a discussion item on building hours?
I guess seeing how Vicky has left for the day, the one item we wanted to bring up was due to security issues, the building will now only be opened at six forty-five prior to the meeting. So those of you that show up earlier, the doors at the front will not be open. On regular business days, the building will now be open at seven twenty.
Okay. Thank you. Good to know. Look for a motion to adjourn. Mike made the motion, and Rachel seconded the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thanks for sticking it out.